Welcome everyone to our July twenty-fifth City Daily City Recreation Meeting for July. And at this time, I'd like to have everyone stand for the-
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where with it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joseph, may I have the roll call, please?
You certainly may. May I cheer pastor? Commissioner Luna?
Here.
Commissioner Landos?
Present.
Commissioner Prohno?
Here.
Vice Chair Sisson?
Here.
Chair Pastor?
Here.
All here in accountable.
Okay. At this time, may I get approval of the this evening's agenda, please?
Vote to approve.
Aye, second.
Okay, those in favor of approving the agenda do say aye?
Aye.
Aye, as opposed? Okay. And also, the approval of last month's minutes. May I have a motion to approve those?
Minutes approved?
Okay.
A second?
Those in favor of the minutes being approved do say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you. Okay, and moving on to the Director's Report.
Thank you Chair Pastor. You're in for a very short meeting this evening unless you get real chatting. The Director's Report's gonna be very brief. I believe this stemmed from our last meeting. There was a request to get update on where we were with our cultural celebrations coming up for this year. And so with that, I will share with you a couple of the advanced flyers. The first one in the shoot is happening on Saturday, September twenty-third, two thousand and seven. And that is going to be between noon and three P M. And that is our annual Latino Heritage Month Celebration. And once again, we are going to do this at the War Memorial Community Center, again, from noon to three P M. And we always try something a little bit different to attract more people. Because this event, although it's been a spectacular event for the last five years, the attendance has been not quite what we wanted. So we're going out on a limb, and for the first time, we are gonna have free food and hope that that brings some more people in.
Nice.
So we've got a vendor lined up, and they will be providing free tacos and, I believe tacos and chips and salsa and that kind of stuff. And so admission is free, as it always is. The food will be free. And to kind of keep it in control, we are toying with the idea of either a wristband or a food ticket or something, so that everyone that comes gets a chance for the food, because we're hoping to run out of food. That's, you know, if we have food left over, we failed and didn't get enough people in the building. But at the same time, we don't want the same people getting in line, you know, having ten or fifteen tacos.
Or stamp. You can stamp them, once they get tacos stamped.
That's right.
Tear off their chicken.
So the other thing, we've had some pretty stellar entertainment the last couple of years. Name band groups that tour both nationally, internationally, and play sold-out shows in the Bay Area. Doing something a little bit different, we're trying to get more kids involved. So we haven't yet got a deal struck, but there's a young mariachi group-
Oh wow.
-that we're trying to get. They are really incredible. They were the full mariachi guard, but they're really talented musicians. Kind of like an all-star mariachi band. And so we're hoping to get them. We've got a couple of folklorico dance groups set up and crossing our fingers and, you know, we'll be starting the full court outreach and P R move to get people into the building on the twenty-third. So any questions about that event?
Not from the Chair, but anyone?
Well, through the Chair, many of us here, I'm sure, we've attended. It's always amazing. I mean, last year it was too bad, because it was really good. The entertainment was really good. The food was great. Yeah, and we didn't have enough people, so I look forward to seeing. And it was in the evening, wasn't it, last year?
Last year, we did try the Saturday afternoon.
We did do it.
And historically, for reasons I'm not quite sure, it used to be on a Thursday evening.
Mm-hmm, Thursday evening. That's right.
You know, on a weeknight, kids have homework and it was, so we got, we did okay. But there were two things plaguing us. One is, you know, kids were rushing out to go home and do their homework. And parking is always a challenge there, and it seems a little bit easier on Saturday than on a weeknight, you know, when people are coming home from work. So we're hoping the Saturday is gonna work out.
Joseph, in past events that I've attended on the Latino Celebration, there have been several vendors from the community and information booths there to kind of like help get information out about maybe Samtrans or-
Skyline College.
Skyline College. Is that something similar?
It would be similar, and is this because of the space and the way it's set up? We have fewer compared to, and I'll get to that in our next one. But yeah, there'll be some public service agencies out there that have informational tables.
Nice.
And we're going based on the War Memorial time of hours, or, because I don't see the time-
The time is right next to the date.
Oh, there it is.
Twelve to three, yeah.
Down there. Twelve to three.
Twelve, noon to three P M.
Cool.
Yeah, and we've kind of played with that time. We've tried a longer block of time. We've tried starting earlier. And it seems like the sweet spot for these events is that magical time between lunch, noon, and three.
That's right. That's right.
After three o'clock, the attendance drops off.
That's right.
And before noon, we were sitting, you know, there were more staff than members of the public waiting for people to come in. So we're hoping that this is the right time.
Alright.
And if not, we'll get back to the drawing board next year and find out what that time is. We haven't, we haven't tried Sundays, so that would be maybe the next thing if this doesn't work. Sundays for a lot of people, that's family time, church time, and that kind of thing. So we've sort of stayed away from our big events being on Sundays, but we're open, we're open to changing whatever is gonna work best. So the next big event, and it's probably our crown achievement event, is the Filipino-American, Filipino-American History Month Celebration. And for those, just to give you a little cultural perspective here, these two months come back to back. But the interesting thing is Filipino-American History Month is the month of October. Latino Heritage Month is not a month. It straddles the months of September and October. I believe it starts September fourteenth to October fourteenth. So as a consequence, we get these events kind of close together. But that was interesting that a lot of, you know, when we have Black History Month, it is February. But the exception to that is Latino History Month. It straddles, because it tries to encapsulate a lot of the Latin American countries and Mexico. Their independence fell within that timeframe. So rather than make September into the Latino Heritage Month, it's September fourteenth, October fourteenth. And we'll make a proclamation to that effect at the council meeting prior. So onward to the Filipino-American History Month Celebration. This one, we are really excited about. The beginnings of this were very modest. It was a gathering right here in the rotunda at City Hall. And the very first year, I think, it was an evening, a weekday evening. And the one thing we all agreed on is after one year, we outgrew City Hall, because there weren't enough people. It was just kind of chaotic out there. So the following year, we moved it to the Dolger Cafe, and we kept it there a couple of years. And it was a lot of emphasis on food and a little bit less emphasis on the entertainment. And we kind of grew, outgrew the Cafe Dolger. And the next, there wasn't a good intermediate, intermediate step, but the next move was to Pachelli Gym, which is a great venue for playing basketball and pickleball and volleyball. And even, you know, the teen dances and the, we had a talent show this past Friday. But not the ideal place for Filipino-American heritage. And we thought, you know, most of these big, and we hope this will be a big event in the Bay Area, most of them occur outside. So we thought, we're gonna gamble with Daily City's unpredictable weather, but move it outside in the month of October, so it'd be October fourteenth. Eleven to three, again, kind of following that, that sweet spot in the time. And we're gonna do it at March Bank Park, so it'd be the first time in the short history of this event that we're moving it outdoors.
Didn't we, pardon me, didn't we have it in ceremony at?
We did not. That was the, it was a nonprofit group. It was a five-one-C-three, the Daily City, Quezon City Sisters Cities Friendship Committee.
There you go.
They, they did try it at ceremony, and for those of you who remember that fateful day that sort of marked the end of that event, it was on the black, on the asphalt, in the parking area, kind of beyond where Target is. And it was the hottest day, I think, in the history of Daily City. It was like a hundred ninety-seven degrees out. It was boiling. And there's no shade, and the attendance was horrible.
Wow.
And I think, you know, it was, it was the location, it was the weather, and, and I know there was, there were talk- And there is, there are other events that happen inside the mall there. There's a Pacific Islander event that happens every year that kind of goes through the mall, kind of like what we do with our health and fitness fairs. That group unfortunately, sort of, I think, I think, I don't, I don't want to speculate, but I think that was so disheartening, that was the last thing that group really did. And so they still exist as a five-one-C-three, and they have in the past supported our effort with a cash contribution. So this, this is through the Recreation Division, the librarian Recreation Department. So it's, yeah, fifth or sixth year that we've, we've taken it over.
Nice.
We are excited because it's, it's growing, and we expect to have a minimum of five food trucks in. And I want to acknowledge that Christina Luna is on the planning committee with us.
With Mr. Sisson.
Oh, and the other big news I just shared with, with the mayor, which we haven't really shared a lot publicly, the other big changing factor this year is we have partnered with T F C. If you're familiar with T F C, it's, I always mess up their, it's A B S C B N-
Yeah.
-is the parent company. It's the-
The Filipino channel.
I've seen it as the Filipino channel. I've seen it as Tagalog Filipino channel, but T F C is easier for me. They've recently relocated their corporate headquarters into Dailies, their D C station on Uniborough Zero by the, by the theaters, which are quite spectacular, by the way. I know Christina's been there. And with their partnership, they, it was an automatic connection. It was conduit to some top-notch Filipino entertainment from the Philippines that they will be sponsoring an hour's worth of the entertainment-
Nice.
-and promise big name headliners. So that will be an attraction. They are also gonna be huge in helping get the word out, because they will run public service announcements on T F C. So people throughout the area that subscribe to that channel will know about the event.
That's right.
And as I was mentioning to, to the mayor prior to our meeting, they are gonna host a press conference, too, to kick off the event with their C E O and the mayor of Daily City to get the word out. So we've got high aspirations for this. And you asked about vendors. For this event, we probably will have about sixty. We'll have a main stage. We're gonna have, logistically, this is a little bit more involved than anything we've typically done, because we're gonna have a stage that we're gonna have to bring in, sound system, porta-potties. We're looking at a, a big canopy-style tent, just in the off-chance that it's one of those blazing hot days. We want a place for people to retreat. We're hoping to have a beer garden at this, which is, which is kind of new for us, too. Maybe, I'm not at liberty to say who we're, who we're working with on that, but it's, it's a business that, that is hopefully coming to Daily City, that would be that partner. And coincidentally, would be coming to D C Station right next to the retail store for T F C, so.
Sounds very promising.
There's a signed lease, but they haven't made any formal announcements, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna tip the hand of who is.
And that's okay. I like surprises.
But I will say, I've, I've been in Daily City, working for the city for twenty-one years. And we have talked about how, especially in the last five years, and Christina keeps looking at it because she knows that there, the, the microbrewery community is huge everywhere around us. Multiple breweries down the peninsula and in San Francisco and across the bay. And Daily City's missed that, but, but it looks like we're gonna, we're gonna have our first-
Nice.
...local brewery moving into that space. A taproom. Their brewery is actually in East Bay.
We're gonna have our own Oktoberfest.
See, they, they, I was at the space. We, we had a meeting there the other day, and I looked at it. There's, I don't think it's feasible that they will be in their space by even the end of this year, because there's a lot of work to be done. But I'm hoping they can at least join us in the celebration and maybe kick off their brand at a, at a big community event, so. Stay tuned. As soon as I'm comfortable that they're on board, I'll, I'll share that.
Thank you.
Five food trucks, about sixty vendors, a stage of entertainment.
Señor Sisson? Have you spoken to Señor Sisson?
Um, we have not.
That is a nice woman. Just, Señor Sisson.
Um, which, they've got a Daily City connection, too, and I don't know. But we have tried in years past, and up until, and we need, we need to prove to them that we're worthy. Because up until now, they are in such demand that, you know, they can park-
Oh, yeah.
-somewhere in the city and sell out.
That's right.
And they didn't think that we were drawing enough people to the event. So maybe we can change their mind-
Yeah.
-and get them on board, if, if this event turns out to be successful.
Well, especially, pardon me, through the Chair, I was just gonna say was, with all the advertising and with it being on the news and commercials, I'm sure-
And it has been growing. For those of you who were there last year, that, yeah. The frustrating thing is, I know there are about thirty-five thousand Filipino-Americans in Daily City. So to me, success would be several thousand showing up. We, we've probably hit the five, six-hundred mark, and we're hoping to catapult that up quite a bit more this year.
So would, pardon me, would we be thinking about advertising in other cities to bring those people to the community as well? So it would be a destination event?
Well, I think, you know, T F C is international, and certainly they've, they've got a, a large audience in Daily City, Union City, I'm sure, and, and some of the surrounding, you know, I don't know that people are gonna travel real far for this, but maybe with, you know, within the Bay Area, so.
It depends on the stars that they bring.
Yeah, I think, I think that will be-
The people follow on the soap operas and such. Might bring people. This is exciting.
Yeah, it is. I'm just concerned about the parking.
Well, and that's actually one, one of the appeals of having it at March Bank Park, is there is a parking structure there.
Right.
Well, there's actually two parking structures there, and on the weekends, most of those businesses, you know, the workforce isn't there. So there's a lot of parking, especially on the south side, south side.
For the public, I would, I will take my bicycle.
There you go.
That's the best way to go. Enjoy the day.
And, and we're close to Bart, too, so if somebody from the-
Bart, Samtrans Park, it's nearby, so.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like a win-win, and hopefully a win on the weather side.
Well, you know, typically, I don't, I don't wanna push our luck here, but typically, mid-October is probably the best weather we get here, so.
Extra warm weather of summer in October.
Not hot, but comfortable, so.
Yeah. Well, fantastic. Thank you for the news.
Any other questions about that?
I have just one second through the Chair.
Yeah.
Who's, who has the narrative of the, is there a history we can read on Filipino-American that somebody written about it?
We actually do print that in the program.
Okay.
And we've done, in our libraries, we've done a little educational.
That's right.
And we partnered with the P B R C in the past, too, and they've, they've come out and-
Okay.
-read to the kids, and they do a parole-making workshop, but.
Because apparently, somebody, I've got a book. I'm going to, Daily City is considered as the capital of the Philippines outside, I mean, in America. It's reputed to be the capital of, so I have that book somewhere.
I think Honolulu gives us a little bit of a run for our money, too.
Yeah, so I'm gonna write a few footnotes there and maybe continue to-
Now, you know what? That's a great idea, because there, there is the historical part of Filipinos in Daily City that goes way back to when this was a farming region.
The farmers, yes.
And there's a great story that they unearthed at, at the Daily City History Museum-
Museum, yeah.
-about a couple, and I'm gonna mess this up, because I can't remember, but it was mixed-
Yeah.
-mixed race, and so they, they had to go back then to the state of Washington to get married, because they couldn't get married here. So, but they got married and they raised their family here, and they were-
I read about that, too, yeah.
And I think that's a great, great story that needs to be told. A lot of people had, had not heard that. It was one of those quiet little-
No, I never heard of it.
-Daily City stories. I think a lot of people thought, you know, the immigration period came much later, but it's, it's been here for over a hundred years.
Yeah, good, good.
Great, you know, a thought here, too, is that, you know, Samtrans has their, their announcements of different events going on in the community that flashes on their bus. Maybe reaching their communications department, see if we can have that run maybe a couple of weeks before the event, just to get the word out. Because that shows inside the bus as well as outside the bus on the header.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Great idea.
We try to promote their thing, so.
Yeah, there you go.
There we are.
Build up the attendance.
Okay, so on that, I was really excited. The staff is geared up, and, you know, Christina and several others. That's the other, other big difference this year. We definitely have more members of the, the community as part of the planning committee to make this thing as best as we can possibly make it. So we go from the excitement of that to the bitter disappointment of our next item. I was, I shared with Jack, I was, I jumped the gun on this. I was very excited. Out of the blue, we were contacted by a big P R firm out of Oakland who had a client who was interested in partnering up and sponsoring and getting their name out in our community. And I thought, well, this is, this is great. And we were going back and forth, and, and it came down to the fact they, they wanted to sponsor our Mini Hoops program in the fall. And I thought, oh, this is great. It'd be great, great for the company, get some marketing out, but it'd bring in some revenue for us to, to help bolster the program, you know, uniforms, and we talked about other things that we needed for the program. So got all excited about it, and then the carpet was, the rug was pulled from under my feet this afternoon. Our last conversation was that the client chose to go with another nonprofit.
No.
So we, we didn't capture that. But you know what? It, it brings up something I know has been, something close to Vice Chair Sisson. He said, you know, there, there are people out there, there are firms that have some philanthropic, philanthropic tendencies that, you know, we just need to find out where they are and to tap into them. And we left the door open with this. This is the agency I'm talking, it's a huge agency in Oakland. Huge staff, and they represent client, a bunch of big, big clients. So hopefully, he knows that we're eager to partner with somebody, and maybe if there's another company. And I mentioned, too, to Jack, that, you know, Seton is, is a good sponsor, but, but they, for some reason, they, they gravitate more toward the library side. So we're, I mean, the department is still benefiting from Seton's generosity, but, you know, we need, we need to get some partners into the rec program. The Daily City Police Athletic League has been phenomenal over the years. You know, a lot of our programs have happened because of the generosity of the Daily City Police Athletic League. They just had their big annual golf tournament yesterday, and opened. That was quite successful for them, because we are one of their benefactors, so. Anyway, I'm sorry for the disappointing news. I jumped the gun when I put this on the agenda. I thought I was gonna have great news to share with you, and darn. Close.
Keep working towards it, though. At least they're aware of our community now.
Right, they are. And that was good to know. And not, not only were they aware of the community, but it drilled down to the point where they, they, you know, were studying our program, specifically wanted to support Mini Hoops, so. But, you know, it does come as a reminder that, you know, if, when you're out in your travels about and, you know, come in contact with somebody that has some money sticking out of their pockets, that they need to invest back into the community, you know, steer them our way. And we'll make one of these work. We've tried a few times.
There you go.
I thought you were gonna say, if it's sticking out of their pocket, grab it.
No, no, don't grab it, no.
No, they, there is- Shouldn't have said that, but no, you know.
There is so much wealth in the Bay Area.
Yeah, yeah, just to-
And, and as Vice Chair Sisson has said before, we need to have them gravitate towards Daily City, because there's so many opportunities, correct? And we had this conversation months and months ago.
And, well, two years ago, I thought it was really interesting. Mark Benioff, PeopleSoft, is that the name of the company?
Yeah.
The big building going up in San Francisco. And he pledged a hundred million dollars to charities in San, in San Francisco area and challenged everybody else-
That's right.
Oh, wow.
-in, in the tech world to step up, and, you know, they're, they're, they're coming in and using the communities. It's time to start giving back. So he did it in a very big way, and he's got his name on Children's Hospital in U C San Francisco now. And, you know, I was thinking, okay, any minute now, all this tech money's gonna come flooding into our community. You know, Facebook's done some nice things down in East Palo Alto and stuff, but when you look at how much money is out there, it's tiny. That's it for the Director's Report this evening.
Thank you, Joseph, for the updates on the, on the upcoming Latino Phil Am and the update on the P R firm that's still, is aware of Daily City. We're at the area of Commissioner Reports. Do we have anything from the Commission that they'd like to share this time?
I would, this year I was lucky enough to witness a few of our ongoing children's, I should, I don't wanna call it daycare, but, but our programs. So I wanted to say that the first program was when my granddaughter attended at Geller. And the price, I thought, was very reasonable. It was really neat. She had three fill trips, three fill trips in one week. That, that was, and very reasonable. They had a luau, and they went, let's see if I get this right. They took a fill trip, and they actually went, and she saw the island.
Alcatraz.
The Alcatraz. And then, as well as what, there was another, if you know which one it is?
There are lots of activities. I'm not sure. I mean, today, a big group went for a hike at Lands' End and ended up on Ocean Beach-
Nice.
-bonfire and making smores and stuff, and other groups doing that tomorrow. Weekly trips to Gemona Pool. They've gone to the tech museum.
The Gemona Pool as well, yes.
Oakland Zoo. They've gone to Coyote Point, Alcatraz and Pier Thirty-nine, the aquarium.
Oh, yeah, and she went to the aquarium as well, yeah.
Now, they're keeping the kids engaged this year.
I was like, I wanna go. Wait a second. But it was really nice. And, and for the next few weeks, she'll be at War Memorial with the, the basketball training. And the first, yesterday was her first day, and she came home, she was barely walking, and I go, how did it go? And she goes, uh, you know, she's eight, gonna be nine, and she says, my legs are sore. I said, how was it? She goes, it was lots of fun, but, uh. But she got up this morning, and she was ready to go, and, and I was just very, very impressed with, with just firsthand. And when she was going to Geller, I got to speak to some of the, the teachers and the volunteers, and it was an honor. And we have a great group of volunteers and staff, and we're pretty lucky, pretty lucky.
That's fantastic. Good to hear that.
It's really cool.
Do we have any others from the Commission that you'd like to share?
Um, I just wanted to share, I know that Terry Chu came by last meeting from the pickleball group. So I took their offer and went to one of their drop-ins and learned how to play, and it was a lot of fun. Kind of addicting, and I could see why, you know, a lot of people are catching on really fast, so, yeah.
Yeah, I met up with, I also saw Jack Pastor there. I brought kids from Susan B. Anthony and Woodrow Wilson School, and two other kids from, one from Pacifica, a high school student. He's actually playing in the basketball. And I believe one was, I don't remember where, but anyway, they loved it. They enjoyed it. I saw each of the fields, but they have like lines on their, on the, is that supposed to be tennis courts, are there, or not? The basketballs?
I'm not sure.
Because there's a lot of lines there.
But where were you?
For the Pachelli Gym.
Those are actual pickleball court lines.
The green lines, yeah. Actual pickleball lines.
Built to specifications, and it was one of those weird things, where we had a wrestling event there, and there was, there was an accident, and the floor got burnt, so we had to resurface the floor, and I said, timeout. Let's get the pickleball lines in. So we brought, we brought the pickleball guys in and, and, you know, had all the measurements. Those are actual-
Wow, there was a lot of lines there.
The real deal.
Real deal, yeah.
And then they also had a separate room where they would train you, to actually show you how to play it, which was nice. I had some pictures, so I uploaded it, and then, yeah, every kid was excited to explore that. I took the children to see if that's something they might want to follow up in the future as well. And yes, they seemed to be wanting to go again. They are, they've emailed me. Some of them have called me and said where. I passed out the information. Yeah, other than that, there's, I think we have the, the gallery, art gallery. Yeah, thank you, Joseph.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw that. That was great. Yeah, we were there.
Yeah. And I think I want to thank David and everyone else in the staff for setting up the food, setting up the conversations with the people. It was just amazing. And I forgot, I have it written down. I have his email. The guy that actually did all the painting- the paintings.
The artist is a Daly City resident named Alex Carwell.
There you go.
It's, the exhibit is still here.
It's beautiful. Everyone should go up. It is...
No admission, it's free to see.
And I will say that the story, to meet the artist, thank you for remembering that. It was really inspiring, because he had a brain tumor, and that is what's got him to start painting. I mean, the work is so well done, you'd think he'd been painting since he was a toddler. But he started this, and it's not that long ago, four, five years ago.
No.
So I was, we were quite impressed. And the food spread, David, was amazing.
And he has a big, big heart. The way how he actually communicates with the people is just amazing, and that shows in the way he's done his paintings. I can see it. Yes, I do like the fact that the art gallery does get changed sometimes, and everyone has a chance to come by and see what's out there in Daly City Hall.
Yeah, and that was sponsored by the art department, recreation.
No, we...
Put it together. Well done.
We just did it.
Was really nice, really nice.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that up, Luis, because on the way here, before the meeting started, I made a walk up to the area, the second floor there, to see the drawings, self-portraits, pictures of nature, and other friends in his community that he drew. And if you had not told me that he's just doing it for five years, I'd say this is an artist that's been doing this for thirty years, you know? But you can see his, his, his heart coming out on that, on the portraits, and then the photos there. So, I know that in his biography, he talks about, he's a musician. I'm gonna go on his website and find out where he's playing, if he still is. But he loves the guitar, plays the drums, and so I'd like to stay in contact with this local resident and see where else is he demonstrating his work. And also, Luis and Christina mentioned they went to the pickleball, and I did that about two weeks, two Fridays ago. And like you said, we were in a practice room, showing the beginnings of how to maneuver around the pickleball and work with the paddle, and just to kinda like get the hang of it. And, you know, the two and a half hours went by real, real fast.
But you know, the one thing I did like is the amount of exercise.
Yeah. I broke a sweat.
That was...
Yeah, so I encourage anyone who hasn't tried pickleball, they're at the Pacelli Gym. And I don't have the exact dates fresh in my mind on that, but Recreation Department can get that information to you.
Unless Christina has it?
I don't.
Oh.
Okay. But give it a try. It's a scaled-down version of tennis. And it's played with pairs, at least that's how it was demonstrated to us. And it can go as fast as you can when you get more seasoned, but when you're like novice like myself, you just take every step real nice and easy.
It was from age five all the way up to age sixteen, fifteen or sixteen, I believe, the kids that I brought. Yeah.
And there was this one youngster that's just eight years old, that was commanding the court. So I felt jealous there. But anyway, it was a great program. Thank you to Terry and Fred and the group over there for bringing pickleball to our community and the passion that they have for the pickleball program.
And the schedule still there for pickleball in the War Memorial and Pacelli Gym?
At Pacelli Gym, we're running the summer camps, so as soon as our summer camps wrap up, they'll go back to their Tuesday, Thursday, I think it was eleven to two. I saw them today. They were out on the tennis courts at Westlake Park, and it was a pretty good-sized group out there, you know, improvised. There aren't, there aren't lines out there. They sort of make it work for, you know, they're getting their work in. We don't have enough swimming pools, and we don't have enough gyms to have everything going. But they'll get, they'll be at War, and they'll be at, back at Pacelli.
I had a question. It just popped in my mind while seeing the recreation on the pickleball. Is that part of the future planning?
Absolutely. It, you know, kind of, we've been testing the waters, because it's so new to everybody on the staff, and we weren't sure how popular it was gonna be, so we slowly, you know, brought it in first to Pacelli, and it took off, so we introduced it.
The game is exciting for every, every age from, yeah, pretty much from four and up. Yeah, it's very exciting. I recommend it.
As you heard Fred and Terry say at the last meeting too, there's a desire to have some outdoor courts too, so we're hoping, we desperately need to resurface the courts at Westlake and Geller, that we can re-stripe at least one end to incorporate some pickleball courts, so that is in our future plan, absolutely.
Very good.
There you go. Okay. And that said, if there's no further commissioners' report, we're on to announcements and communications, so...
Yeah, I'll start with one that's not, that's not on there. You're part of a history today. We, as you know, we televise these meetings and we stream them. But this is a experiment. We're actually doing a live YouTube stream. And the beauty of that, if you're YouTube fans, the resolution of the video is so much better on YouTube than it is either on the cable channels or where we stream on the city's website. So you're part of our guinea pig team here, and I hope we can get a good report after the meeting. So that's exciting, because if it's successful and it works, it will just really help get all of our messages out to people. That aren't gonna sit and fumble around on a clumsy little screen with, you know, buffering issues. You know, I could sit at home, you know, anyone who's got a Blu-ray player, Blu-ray player or smart TV, go right to the YouTube channel, and it's high-resolution video and good audio, so... We took a leap today, so congratulations to it. We've got the End of Summer coming up on Thursday, August third, is our big giant carnival we'll have at Pacelli Gym. If you wanna see absolute chaos for three hours with all of the summer camps converging in one location, join us for that. That same week, on Saturday, we'll be at the Ceremony Center for our Fun Health and Safety Fair. We do a couple times a year. And another interesting thing we do every year, the lifeguard games in the Bay Area. Daly City always feels a really competitive team of our lifeguards competing, lifeguards from throughout the area. We're sending two teams to lifeguard games this year, August sixth, out at the Robert Livermore Community Center Pool in lovely Livermore, California. So I hope we get some medals back from that. We'll report back to you at our August meeting to see how that went. And then our End of Summer Luau is Saturday, August 12th, which really is sort of the exclamation point on summer, because all of our camps wind down on Friday, August 11th is kinda when everything winds down. We gear up to transition back into our after-school program. So the big farewell for summer 2017 will be Saturday, August 12th, from 12:30 to 2:30 in the pool, Giamona Westmore High School. And I think there's at least one more announcement that needs to be made tonight.
We have a special announcement that one of our longstanding commissioners has a little bit of news to share with us, and it's a very promising news. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Teresa.
Thank you. I was trying to figure out, excuse me, how many years I'd been on, first the Park and Rec and then the Recreation Commission, and I couldn't figure it out. So it's been a number of years. And I, I'd like to let everyone know, and I let my fellow commissioners here know as well as Joseph, that the mayor, Glenn Sylvester, had asked me if I'd like to be a commissioner on the Planning Commission, and I accepted. So this will be my last meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, because
That is.
in a couple of short weeks, you will be with the Planning Commission.
Yes. So I wanted to just say that I have had a blast. It's almost like graduating high school, and you have to go to something tough, I think, because it, there was a few meetings we had hard decisions to make, as you recall, Jack, but for the most part, this is, I'd say, the top, okay, get myself in trouble here, but the top commissions, and we are privileged to be able to work with an amazing team, yourself, Denise, all the people that we've met through the years, all the staff and students and volunteers. I just wanna say, it's been my sincerest honor to be here representing, actually, I'm here on behalf of Councilman Ray Buena Ventura, as each of us are appointed. And so I wanted to say thank you so much. Thank you, thank you to all of you, to you, and to everyone. I've had a blast. Thank you.
And at our next meeting, you will meet our newest Recreation Commissioner, Andrea Wilcox. I think she's gonna be a great addition to this group, and looking forward to her joining. And then maybe we can have a friendly pickleball competition between the Recreation Commission and the Planning Commission. Determine once and for all what the best commission is.
There you go. Thank you.
Well, Teresa, thank you for all that you've done for this commission board and the city of Daly City and the kids, and it's great hearing the stories of your family as they grow up and participate in the Daly City program as well. It's more like, tell you folks, this is not just a commission, it's friends. And family that we grew up through, and we work and volunteer our time on this, on this Commission, Recreation Commission Board. So I'm gonna miss you, but best of luck to you.
I know. You guys are great. Thank you.
Just to, but also, here an acknowledgement that Teresa's been sponsoring a lot of programs, schools, and so she's just not a volunteer, but a donor.
Thank you.
And tremendous work that she did with the 35th Anniversary of the Dolger Senior Center. The woman sitting right up there was the one who really put that whole event, wonderful event, together last year. So the staff is also very appreciative, not only everything you do, but having the support from this body really means a lot to the staff too, and, you know, no disrespect to the rest of you, but Teresa has been around
Would start finding you guys though.
So many events, and is so, so supportive of the staff. We really do appreciate it, every one of us, and thank you very much. And you're not going away.
No, I'm coming.
You're not packing up and going to college across the country. We expect to see you.
Oh, I'll be there.
We'll give you the gold pass.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
And with that said, best of luck to you.
Best.
Best of luck to you. And I forgot to mention one thing also when we were having the commission reports, that we, on Fourth of July, there was a nice activity going on by the Dolger Center on the Pacelli Gym. Lot of food, lot of entertainment, and a lot of raffles, and a lot of rekindling with the community that you haven't seen in a while, so it was, and the weather cooperated for a change. It was a nice day over there in the courtyard. So thank you for everyone who put together the activity for the celebration of Fourth of July at the Dolger Center.
Thank everyone. What time were they starting to prepare all the food, since 4:00 AM, I heard?
Oh, that is true, yes.
Yeah.
Wow, so thank everyone that did all make that wonderful day to happen.
And the food was good, too. And the entertainment.
Oh, yeah.
It was amazing.
It always is.
The fourth is always.
But with that said, this concludes our event, our meeting for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn this evening's mission, meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
As a second?
I second.
Okay, those in favor of adjourning this evening's meeting, do say aye.
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 Let's pose. All right, this meeting is now adjourned.